Who are we missing?
Gary.
Oh. (laughing).
I'm always here as usual.
(laughing).
Okay, I'd like to call the Village Board to order for Tuesday, April 23rd. Roll call, please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
President.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Bukows.
Here.
Trustee Melczeski.
Here.
President Kardowski.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember all our men and women throughout the world in uniform. Okay, I have no additions to the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda is presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on open and closed minutes from March 26th, regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second to-
Oh, wait a minute, I wasn't- I'm sorry, I can't do that.
I'll move to approve.
I can't make that motion.
Okay.
I was sick.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. A motion I need for the regular meeting, April 2nd, Village Board minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay. Comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, let's move on. Okay, any written communications and announcements? You have the letter from the Historical Society. They were very grateful to all the staff at the village for participating in our Ningyo IT training. So we got a $5,000 grant to give to a 501(c)(3) and we gave it to the Historical Society. So you all have that in your packet. Action on the consent agenda. Operator's license, investment report, financial policies, annual update, March 2019 general fund financial report, budgeted expenditures, and department reports, April 2019. Anybody want anything pulled or?
Move to approve. Second.
Just before we vote, I just have a question. I read it, there's something that came in higher than we expected, Greg, in your report. What was that? Something came in higher than we had thought. I can't remember what it was.
On the financials?
Yes. For where we are now.
Probably snow removal.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But it's still early in the year, so.
I'm in there.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. Yep, thank you. Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 9A, informational presentation by NEW Water regarding the Ashwabanon-Dutchman Creek Adaptive Management Project. Mr. Doug.
Yes, thank you. As you may have seen in the news over the past couple of years, New Water has been working on a pilot project on Silver Creek as part of the new phosphorus regulations and trying to meet some of the DNR requirements with regards to those phosphorus requirements. And the pilot project was a success over the past couple of years, and the next logical step was to do a larger project. And the one meeting most of the criteria was the Ashwabanon-Dutchman Creeks. And Tom Sigmund is here from New Water to give you a brief informational presentation on that.
Welcome.
Thank you. As Doug mentioned, I'm Tom Sigmund, Executive Director for New Water, and wanted to give just a brief update on the work we're doing in the watershed, which will come to your community here quite soon. So the agenda for today is just a little, very short overview of our organization, some background on the pilot work we've done for the last five years in Silver Creek, the full-scale project we're going to be doing in Dutchman and Ashwabanon Creeks, and then just a very brief timeline. So for New Water, vision we have for the utility is protecting our most valuable resource, water, and that drives everything that we do. Looking at a photograph of our Green Bay facility at the mouth of the Fox River, we have two facilities, one in DePere and larger one in Green Bay. We treat it, combined between those two facilities, 38 million gallons of water each day. If you look at our service area, the area in green is tributary to the Green Bay facility, and the area in orange is tributary to our DePere facility. So you can see that we do serve the metro area and then also go out all the way to serve the Village of Plaski as well as up the east Bay Shore area. Our primary job is protecting public health, and we do that through producing clean water that we discharge back to the Fox River. But in addition to that, we have been working over the last five or six years realizing that the biggest impact that we can have on this area's water environment is to be working not just within the fence and doing the work that we do, but also outside the fence in the watershed. So looking at a photograph, a number of years ago, looking at the Fox River discharging into the bay, that happens about seven to eight times a year, and discharges an incredible amount of not just sediment, but nutrients into the bay. So those excessive nutrient loads have led to a hypoxic area or dead zone in the bay that happens every year in the summer and gets larger and larger as we see every year. So we have some regulations that are going to require us to reduce phosphorus to very low levels, and we, in partnership with Department of Natural Resources and other entities, have an option for us to do what's called adaptive management to more cost-effectively and significantly higher impact workout in the watershed to get the same results. So mentioned, we started with the Silver Creek project. Silver Creek is tributary of Duck Creek, just to the west of here. We started with a- it's a watershed of about 4,800 acres, and we started the project about five years ago to basically kick the tires or test to see how we could do adaptive management, and we found that we could do it quite well. So that project has gone well. Some of the things that are done as part of the watershed work is to install what's called best management practices on agricultural land. And a couple- a picture here is shown, one of those practices is grassed waterways. So these areas would erode into the fields just naturally through rainfall, and by putting in engineered grass waterways, keep that erosion from keeping- from having the soil leave the field.
Excuse me, where is Silver Creek?
Silver Creek is just to the west of here. It is tributary to Duck Creek. It's near the airport is one area.
Never heard of it before, okay, thank you.
It's a very, very small tributary. So in addition, some other best management practices, one that we have implemented, seen a lot of success, is providing what's called interseeding in between corn and soybean crops to make sure that there's always something growing on the land. And if you can do that throughout the season, growing season as well as the winter, you can keep the sediments from coming off of the land as well as nutrients. And this technology is one, you can see, where you intercede something in between growing corn crops, it goes dormant while the corn is growing, and then after the corn's harvested, the crops, cover crops in between do come out and protect the land over the winter. So in Silver Creek project for 2018, we had conservation enhanced nutrient management plans on 1,500 of those 2,400 acres, and that's a- those are really important plans to have. Eighty-nine percent of the land in that area was not tilled, either through no-till or some other type of crop. That's pretty amazing, that reduces a lot of the runoff. And in addition, the winter cover, you can see, going back to 2015 when we started, 30% of the land did not have cover over the winter. And so when you have a wet spring like we do before, there's a crop put in, you can have an awful lot of runoff of sediment and nutrients. And in the last couple of years, 2017, 2018, we're in the 80 to 85% of that land has some type of cover on it over the winter, and that's certainly going to reduce runoff. So we're going to move beyond that pilot project that gave us the confidence and the relationships with both our partners as well as landowners to be able to move forward with a large project. And so we're branding this, the new watershed program, and it's going to be in this area. So if you look at the two black outlined areas of Dutchman and Ashwabanon Creek, they total up to be about 38,000 acres with about 20,000 acres under agriculture. And Dutchman Creek is- they're actually both about the same size, have- Ashwabanon Creek has a little higher ag use, but we needed both of those to come together to be able to meet the regulatory obligations we have under the DNR to be able to offset a similar amount of phosphorus reduction on these lands compared to the phosphorus reduction we would have coming out of our effluent. So the next step, as we're moving forward in 2019, basically it's a planning and inventory year. We are doing a lot of desktop, walking fields, and trying to establish the partners to be able to move forward with that. In 2020, we're going to be also back out in the fields, doing the walks, identifying what the practices that can be put on the land, and then implementing some of the practices beginning in 2020. This program is a 20-year program for us. DNR allows that in the implementation plan in five-year cycles, but we plan to be doing this work over the next 20 years. So with that, I was asked to keep it brief, and I have, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
The Silver Creek area, I'm sorry.
Move ahead.
The Silver Creek area that was with private landowners that days had contracted with, the Silver Creek area?
There were a number of, well, they're all private landowners. The Oneida Tribe is one of the larger landowners in the area, but there are also a number of non-Oneida Tribe-owned land.
How were they contacted, and it was all just voluntary?
It's all voluntary. We have no authority to do anything regulatory-wise. We worked through the agriculture crop consultants. They tend to have the best relationships with the farmers, and so our team, working with them as well as the County Land and Water Conservation Group, made the contacts and was able to develop a plan that made sense for the farmers. We tapped into as much federal funding as we could to help assist with the implementation of the program. Thank you.
Along the Mississippi area out there on the western part of the state, don't they mostly have non-till farming out in that area as mandated almost by the government?
I can't tell you what's out in the western part of the state. The soils are different, the topography's quite a bit different. I don't know about the western part of the state. No-till is a fairly new practice in this part of the state. The clay soils, I think for generations, people have felt that they needed to do significant tilling, but we found with some work with the UWGB as well as other groups that farmers can maintain, if not improve, the yield through no-till practices and then reduce their inputs of time and fuel and other things.
And the phosphorus problem is never going to be solved unless there's regulatory control over farmland. It just can't be done. And God love our farmers, without them, we'd be in trouble. And again, tonight on the national news, there was, the dairy farmers are struggling. They're not making any money, they're not making it, and it's a great life, they want to live that way, and God bless them for it. But on the other hand, it's not going to happen. And the DNR, and this is a great program, and we hope you succeed, and we hope the farmers will cooperate, but in the long run, unless there's some legislative control over farmland phosphorus, it's never going to solve the problem. Look what happens in the west end of Lake Erie. It's terrible. It's terrible. And it gets worse every year, it's not getting better. So somehow, we've got to get a handle on- do you- you don't have to answer this, I don't want to. Do you lobby at all for your organization, the NEW Water, do you lobby at all for control of that, for phosphorus coming off of farmland? Or do you stay away from that?
There's a lot packed into that. Yes, I do, I do work with both the federal and the state to try to, not necessarily for the regulation side of it, but more for the, in the farm bill, to make sure that the conservation funds that are directed towards these things are, is enhanced as much as we can. I do understand there's concern that it may be, the long-term solution may be regulation. We do not have that in the short term. And what we found with the Silver Creek project was through voluntary approaches, helping the farmers understand where they maybe have input costs that they don't need to put in, we found that we've got good voluntary participation. So that's the approach, that's really the only approach we have, and that's what we're going to work with.
Well, Greg, good for you, good luck.
Thank you.
I've been on the majority of the Clean Bay Backers tours, and I would recommend everybody join those when they come around in the fall. The cover crops, the rotational grazing, all of the programs that are impacting this watershed are really cutting-edge, and they're going to become everyday activities over the next few years. The difference is amazing when you start to look at the results from even just two years of cover crops being in place.
The partnerships that we've been able to work with, and these participants were always in the watershed, whether it be the Brown County and Otagame County Land and Water Conservation, they do great work, the National Resource Conservation Service is there, as well as some other NGOs that have, that want certain things to get done in the watershed and have participated. So things are going well.
You mentioned Silver Creek and Dutchman's Creek, which is probably the bigger portion of our area. How much more area outside of that is going to be covered that you're in control of to stop this phosphorus deal? Does it go into Otagame County and, you know, because some of that water's coming this way, there's no doubt about that. So are you working with those other communities or counties?
Dutchman and Ashwabanon Creek are split between at Otagame County and Brown County, so we're working with that. There is a, if the area you're talking about is outside of that area in the lower Fox River watershed, there is a very large area that, and there are other partners besides New Water that are working in different parts of the watershed to try to see if we can achieve the same results.
But with all the work you're doing, if they're not doing much, what's, what are we gaining here? It's still coming through here?
Well, I think it's every little bit's going to help, and we're going to do what we can to try to improve the water in, coming from that part of the watershed, and there are others, they're going to be working in other parts of the watershed to do the same thing.
Okay.
Gary, part of that also, and what Tom's been instrumental in doing, is there are phosphorus requirements that are put on the treatment plant, and this is a lower-cost way of doing that, that the DNR allows, instead of putting additional treatment facilities at the treatment plant. And you want to exhaust those lower-cost options before expanding a treatment plant to treat for something of this nature. So it's kind of a twofold benefit, it's helping the environment and it's helping delay some potential future expansions of the plant.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, 9B, discussion on EAB update. Tim?
If you remember, about two years ago, we had our initial find of EAB in the Village of Ashwabanon, just a block from here on the corner of Marvell and Fox Heights. That was the initial find, that we found doing a normal pruning out in the, out on the streets, and we confirmed EAB at that point, and then from that point on, as expected, Emerald Ashbore kind of spread throughout the community. There were some reports this last winter with the hard cold wind chills that we had that it was going to significantly knock back or wipe out Emerald Ashbore. Despite the media reporting some of those things, that simply wasn't true. If you remember back in the winter of 2014, we had very similar weather, probably even colder, that obviously didn't wipe out Emerald Ashbore. So there was some information about that at that point in time last winter, and I just kind of wanted to clarify that as well. Since that initial find, hopefully anything that we're talking about tonight really isn't new information, but since I haven't updated you since that point in time, there's just a couple of things that we briefly wanted to mention. Now that we've got Emerald Ashbore throughout the village, and I would estimate that the village is generally infested, rather than isolated pockets, you know, here and there throughout the community, not necessarily every tree has Emerald Ashbore or is exhibiting signs of it, but they will very likely in the very near future. So with that being said, we are kind of going from a proactive management approach, which we've been able to do for the last 10 years, to more of a reactive management approach. Okay, now we've got this insect here, we've done everything that we can to prepare for it, and now we need to be more reactive, specifically removing trees and grinding stumps and replanting as see fit. About 15 years ago, when Emerald Ashbore was first discovered in the United States, we had about 1,700, 1,800 ash trees in the Village of Ashwabanon. And through the proactive removals, over the last 10 years, we've been able to reduce that population by about a third. So currently, we're at about 1,100 ash trees in our streets and our parks. So that doesn't include private property or natural areas, Sherwood Forest, Hidden Valley Park, all those conservatory areas that we have, but that's just street trees and park trees that are inventoried and managed. So we've made a lot of progress over the last 10 years by reducing that population by about a third, and now we're getting to that point where it's crunch time. We're going to have a lot of ash trees to remove over the next three to five years. You know, for instance, some of our parks, we've been able, through that proactive management approach, just remove all the ash trees in that park. Mike Van Park, we have a single one left that is scheduled for removal. We hoped to have it done last winter, that didn't happen, but, so that will be taking place shortly. This particular property here at Village Hall, about five years ago, we removed half of the ash trees that were planted here. And then this past winter, after the discovery of Emerald Ashbore on a tree over by the public safety side of the property, we removed the remaining ash trees here. So those will be ground out this spring and replanted as appropriate. You'll see the attachment to the green sheet that we did. We met with Tony, Mary, Allison to kind of come up with an approach, you know, now that Emerald Ashbore is here, it's going to create a lot of dead trees. This is absolutely going to impact private property owners. How are we going to manage that? You know, the private property is going to be up to the homeowner or the property owner. It's their responsibility to manage that property and take care of those problems. But where it gets complicated is when we have the neighbor-to-neighbor situations, the private property to private property, and given the amount of private property that we have, we just don't have the resources to mitigate those disputes. So those are going to solely be up to the property owners to resolve as neighbors. When we have private trees, for instance, encroaching upon the right-of-way, when maybe we have a large ash tree planted right behind the sidewalk, it's clearly on private property, but, you know, obviously if that tree fails, you know, it is going to impact the safety of the right-of-way. So the letter that we attached to the green sheet is kind of a draft letter that we will use, with Tony's input and Mary and Allison, will use this to kind of address those private properties that could potentially impact the public right-of-way and public safety. So I just kind of wanted to make you aware of that particular letter, because obviously, you know, the residents that you represent, they may be calling you about this. So just, I just kind of wanted you guys to see at first, so this is the approach that at least at this point in time are planning to take. The yellow items within that letter are stuff that would obviously change and could be customized to each individual property owner. Basically, where we go from here is that we've got about 1,100 ash trees to remove in our parks and our streets, but we also have our natural areas, Sherwood Forest, Hidden Valley, Argon Park, where we have trails through these wooded areas. We also need to address the dead ash trees that are going to be there shortly as well. Discussing with Greg over the last couple of years, you know, kind of the approach that he wanted to take, you know, obviously we don't have the staff to do all this work ourselves. We will always do what we can with resources that we have, but, you know, contracting is going to be something that we're going to have to do. So we've been working with Greg to kind of, you know, the approach that he would like to take as far as funding this, do more of a construction, like a bonding project, similar to like a road construction project. So later this year, we'll be coming forth with a plan to remove all those trees within that project. As we're finding ash trees out on the streets, you know, through our normal maintenance, I am identifying trees that are positively infested with Emerald Ashbore with pink dots. Don't ask me why I picked paint, I just chose it, I had some pink paint, so trees that have pink dots on them. And then once again, you know, if your constituents are asking you about this, and many of them have called us, the pink dots is an ash tree that is identified as being positively infested with EAB. So it's just kind of my way of keeping track of the ones that are recorded as being infested and the ones that are not. And then, once I identify that with, out in the field, we will go into our inventory and record it there digitally, so then we can generate reports on where all of our infestations are.
Tim, if you have a neighborhood, street tree, and one has it positively identified, and there's another one right next to it that doesn't show positive signs, if you go in there to take that infested tree out, will you take the other ones out in that same neighborhood, or will you just concentrate on the pink dots?
If you have two ash trees side by side and one is infested, it's highly unlikely that the other one isn't infested. So removing the one that shows the visible signs will not save the one that doesn't.
No, but will, if you go, if we go in there to take a street tree, a pink dot tree, and there's another one next door, are you going to take that one as well?
Yes. Yes.
What happens, Tim, if, what hap- does these decay from the inside, and you can't really notice that, for example, you get a strong wind and boom, it's going to be, it looks like a healthy tree and it's going to fall? Or will you notice it more than that?
Yes, you should be able to notice it. What we're finding, and the easiest way to identify it is looking for the woodpecker flecking or woodpecker activity. They're getting the little white larva out from underneath the bark, and to do that, they need to remove a bunch of the bark, and then they kind of work their way to find it. So if you look, you know, even up in the neighborhood up by, like, Green Bank So if you look, you know, even up in the neighborhood up by, like Green Bay Nursery, you can see all the flecking on up and down all the trees. You know, even right next door at Green Bay, or Green Bay Packaging, the old Green Bay Packaging building, there's three ash trees right up against the building that stand up twice as high as the building. If you look at those trees in the sunlight, you can see all that woodpecker flecking. So once you see that flecking, you do have a period of two to three years to remove that tree before it becomes hazardous.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, just to clarify, before you mentioned about some of the trees maybe on private property that were close to, that could impact right away. So the village would remove those?
If they are on private property, the homeowner would be responsible to remove them.
Even the ones that are close to, really close to the?
Yep, yep. Maintenance is determined by the property that it's located on.
Okay.
So the letter that, that we presented tonight would be a way that we would formally notify residents that, you know, that this condition exists. Because I think a lot of people probably don't even realize, you know, that that tree is an ash for one, and two, that it actually has Emerald Ashbore. So, you know, the point of this is to try to educate the, the property owners and residents.
Okay.
Bless you.
You mentioned in your notes, Tim, about a discussion with a paper mill. Tell us more about that.
One of the things that we founded, some of the professional networking meetings and seminars, conferences that we go to, to people that have been dealing with Emerald Ashbore for, for 10 or 15 years, dealing with the amount of wood that is generated during an infestation is something that they had a hard time dealing with. So with Public Works, we've got our, our site where we dump leaves and grass and other debris. We cleared out an area that we can use to store this wood material as it's generated. And with the paper mills in the area, you know, some of them reached out to us about cooperating with us to generate some wood fiber for their mills. Obviously, they have a vested interest in, in creating paper, and to do that, they need wood fiber. So basically what we do is they'll take anything from four inches to 20 inches, and then we cut it into 100-inch lengths, stack it up, and then haul it there. And then they pay us per ton. Now, it's not something that we're going to get rich by doing, but it certainly pays for itself. You know, by the time you pay for the labor to, to haul it to the pit and then truck it down to Kukona. But we're getting rid of a large volume of wood, and we're making a little bit of money at the, at the end of the day. The company is Expera Paper, and they just got bought out by a Swedish company and I-
Allström Mungsho.
Exactly.
I work there.
Okay, yeah. So that's the company that we're working with when we haul it down to their Kukona plant.
Is this roughly equivalent, Tim, to the Dutch elm disease that we had 20, 30, 40 years ago? Roughly?
Yeah.
Same number of trees roughly?
Yeah. Dutch elm disease was a disease, and Emerald Ashbore is an insect, but the impact that it has is very similar.
Okay.
Any other questions, concerns?
Thank you, Tim. Okay, moving on. 9C, request to approve Title Town Phase Two Infrastructure Development Agreement with Title Town Development LLC. Tony?
All right, contained in your packet is a proposed development agreement. As Phase Two continues along with the development at Title Town, this is an agreement in which some infrastructure is going to be reconstructed and replaced. On Brookwood, there will be a new water main as well as a stormwater main. And Brookwood will also be repaved, and Marley Lane also will be reconfigured as well with respect to the northbound lane of traffic. I believe that's been discussed and gone through as part of the Phase Two PUD. And what this agreement does is simply indicates that Title Town Development will be basically design, building, and constructing those improvements, and will be donating those to the village upon completion. This agreement is really similar to the agreement that was also executed as part of Phase One and the infrastructure that was improved as part of that. So with that, we would recommend adoption of the proposed development agreement.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Title Town Phase Two Infrastructure Development Agreement. Any more discussion?
Just a couple, one quick question. So this will take, it's hard to see from the pictures, but it'll take up to Marley from where we are now? Is that basically what it is? So it'll go, so this will kind of complete the, the development between Ridge and Marley?
This, this is the infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Quick question, the agreement that Tony had presented, is that an agreement that you worked with the Title Town District and the village in order to come up with this then?
Yes, that's correct.
Between two parties?
Yes.
Okay, and we both agreed upon it?
Yep.
Okay, we're good to go.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 9D, action on permitting a softball tournament at ASC offering beer sales.
This is simply a permit for a softball tournament out at the Ashwabanon Sports Complex. Usually these would not go to you, but because it involves, or they're requesting beer sales out there, it is going, it has gone to Park Board and now is before you. This is a group of, of people that have been running a tournament as a benefit for the Humane Society. It's been going on probably for over 10 years now. They've raised, I'm remembering from the Park Board meeting, several hundred thousand dollars for the Humane Society over the course of that time. It's been held at ASC Noble in Howard for the last several years. However, they are, are outgrowing that facility, or they have outgrown it, and would like to move it over to the Ashwabanon Sports Complex. With the alcohol sales, which would just be beer, it's always gone before these committees. And really, we really haven't had a lot. It's mostly been our own internal state national championships that we've had beer sales out there for softball. So this is one of the first private tournaments that we are requesting this. The group came to the Park Board meeting and they apologized. The leader of the group is actually out of state right now on business. But I just said I would take over for her and just try and answer any questions. It's a 12-team tournament. They probably expect around 200 people. I did call the Recreation Director in Howard. They assured me that there was no issues in the past regarding any alcohol sales or any problems because of the alcohol sales that was out there. So before you tonight, to, to get your thoughts and potential approval to allow them to have that Humane Society fundraiser at the sports complex on August 10th. That is the same day as the blast. So what our role would be, obviously, is we'd prop the fields on Friday night, and we'd allow them to chalk their own fields. We have a simple chalker, begs to chalk, and have that available to them throughout the day on Saturday. And we'd, we'd be available if they needed help, but really they're, they're on their own out there. And, and they were fine with that, wouldn't explain.
Gail, that brought it forward too. They're Ashwabanon alum. They've been through their programs and stuff too, so.
This is number one for them, in Ashwabanon?
For the, the site, this is their first choice. Yeah, this, this is, really, they'd probably stay at ASC Noble if possible. But they're, they're looking to, to move here just because they've outgrown it. They're looking to to get more room with some of the activities that are going on.
It's a one-day tournament. It's just a-
A one-day?
Yep.
So they'll have licensed bartenders and all of that business?
What, what would happen is, is if, if the village board tonight would, would be comfortable with it, then they would apply for the picnic license through the village clerk's office.
Rex, is there any time limit when they have to shut it down?
10 o'clock.
It is 10 o'clock?
Yep.
Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this permit. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Rex, do you remember at the Park Board meeting, when they started from year one, being able to donate like a few hundred bucks to the Humane Society and what ended up by last year?
Yeah, I want to say it was like $500 or something in the first year. And I mean, it was tens of thou, it's like over $10,000, I think. They're up to now from the tournament.
Yeah, that's nice, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thanks Rex. 9E, resolution R1-3-99F, Declaration of Official Intent Reimbursement for Construction Projects. Greg?
So basically, we have a, a bunch of TIF projects that we're going to be working on. Cormier Road, we've got, I'll pull them all up, the Schneider National Site. And we are going to go bond for those projects in, in June. But they're going to start. So essentially what this resolution is allowing us to do is spend the money before we technically received it from our bonding. And we're just going to float existing cash that we have. We have enough reserves with, you know, we collect taxes in January, February, and then we, we, we spend down until we get another influx of cash in August, and then we spend down through the rest of the year. So we're going to finalize the bonding on these projects in, in June, and Barrett will be here to walk through that process like we normally do. But we want to get going on the projects, get started on them. And this, what this is doing is saying, hey, we can spend some of those proceeds technically before we get them. It's a resolution that was created in 1999, and you can see by sub F that we've used this many times in the past to address such situations. I talked to Doug and asked him if, basically, we're allowing ourselves to spend up to $2 million. And he feels that's plenty. We won't start getting a lot of the invoices on these projects until mid, late summer. So really, it's allowing us to start these projects now with anticipation of receiving the bonding. At this point, there's no reason to believe that we won't. They'll get priced out. We've been working with Barrett finalizing those details, and so they'll go out to bid. And like I said, they'll close out in June, middle of June.
Okay.
Move to approve Resolution R1-3-99, small g in parentheses.
A second.
Says g on mic.
We have a motion and a second, but it, mine says F.
Well, the, the title says F, but the actual resolution says G. So whatever is, whatever is appropriate.
Okay.
I just want to know though, before we vote, do-
It should be G.
It should be G?
Yeah, the resolution that's listed, that's provided, that's the official resolution, a resolution that's adopted. So the header on the, on the action sheet should, should say G.
Should say G.
Is there a second?
Yes, there was a second.
I just want to know if you and Tony are going deer hunting in May, or what, what, what's the deal?
No, I thought it was something different. It sounds like more-
Oh, okay. I just thought there was a new season coming, okay.
It's turkey hunting camp.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve that resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 9F, proclamation honoring the United States Air Force Airmen of Note. We put this in the packet. I will be presenting the Air Force Band with this proclamation on Sunday evening. So I just wanted everybody to have a copy of it and creates Air Force Airmen of Note Day on Sunday, April 28th. So I will present that to them on Sunday night. Okay, 9G, action on committee appointment, site plan review. This is, Jim Johnson's been on our site plan for a really long time.
Great member.
Yeah, he, he's, works part-time with Capital Credit, and they now, he will be out at their main street office, their new building. They bought the, the black building with the red light up on top. And it'll be harder for him to get here at 3:00 on the first and third Tuesday. So we have a member that applied to be on site plan, Dennis Persick. And I would like recommendation of approval.
Move to approve, Dennis.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve that appointment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 9H, action on committee appointments, May 2019 through April of 2020.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mary, one question on that, but quick. We've made, we've made a concerted effort to, or you have changed some committee appointments because they no longer live in the village?
Yes.
Are we going to continue that practice, or what are, what are we going to do here?
That was my, my plan.
Okay, I just want people to understand that, that, you know, in the past, we've had people that have worked here, that have been on our committees, and haven't been a village resident.
Right. If, if I can, if I can find people to be on the committees that live in the village, I will, I will find those people to be on the committees. We're, we, we're a small village and I, and I like representation from the citizens of the village, if possible.
I agree with that. I just, I just think Jim Johnson was an outstanding example of a person who didn't happen to live in the village, but was a great, and I'm sure Gary would agree with me. He's just a great member of the-
Yes.
Of the site plan review committee.
And we're still looking for one for Police and Fire Commission?
Yes, I, we have to meet with an individual who is on vacation. Anyway, we have a motion and a second to approve. Did we vote on that yet?
Yes.
Oh, we did, okay. Okay. 9I, request to approve contract with Fitch and Associates to conduct a public safety operational study. Allison, finally, after how many years, we're going to get this study?
We are. So we sent out a request for proposals that was reviewed by our evaluation committee before it went out. We tweaked it a little bit, sent it out across the country, received proposals back on, I think, like April 5th. We, as a group, reviewed them, discussed them, decided who we would interview, conducted four interviews on April 16th. And ultimately, the committee as a whole agreed on Fitch as the most qualified consultant within the group. I've outlined the overall costs to each of them. Fitch has agreed to reduce their cost to not to exceed $89,000, including travel expenses, and we would like authority to move forward with Fitch and Associates and kick off our study, hopefully, yet this week.
I'll move to approve the contract with Fitch, Fitch and Associates to conduct a public safety operation study and not to exceed $89,000.
Second. The motion and a second to approve the contract with Fitch and Associates not to exceed $89,000? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried.
When do you think that'll be in the process, Allison? Next couple, may it be done by the end of the year, you think?
We've asked that it be done. It was actually a study results presented to you in September.
Okay.
Their goal is to have it kind of through committee and a few different draft versions prior to that. And hopefully, yet this week, we'll get engaged, really start driving schedules for visits and gathering data.
All right, thank you.
Okay. 9J, request by Ashwabanon Public Safety Officers Association to advance grievance to step three. Tony?
All right, there's been a request by the Ashwabanon Public Safety Officers Association to advance the grievance, and they've requested to address the board as part of the collective bargaining agreement. Step three puts the request from the association to the village board at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Am I supposed to read this whole thing?
Oh, no, I don't. This is the attorney for the union, Mr. Aaron Halsted.
Shall I proceed?
Okay.
Are those lights, we don't have lights going on here. Is that, is there a reason for that? It's awful dark out there. These lights are not on, is that, normally they're on, aren't they? No? It just seems to me it's darker than usual out there. My eyes are good. I can't hear a thing, but my eyes are good.
Okay, yes, you can go ahead and proceed, I'm sorry.
No problem, thank you. My name is Aaron Halsted. I'm an attorney with the Hawkes Quindell Law Firm in Madison, and I represent the Public Safety Officers Association. And as was just stated, we file a grievance that has gone up through the various steps, and the final step before the grievance goes to arbitration is for the board to make a decision on the denial of the grievance. So this is the last step in the collective bargaining agreement, and I wanted to highlight what our position is on the grievance, and then entertain any questions that the board might have for me. I, I did give a packet that our association president, Bob Messer, distributed to the board, which are just some of the central documents that are relevant, and I, and I don't know if any or all of you know really even what the grievance is about, so I'll just give you the highlights of it. And there was a Fraternal Order of Police Golf Outing in August of 2018, and that is a voluntary association that is not in any way condoned by, you know, it's in no way authorized by the village or connected to the village. It's just some members of the Public Safety Officers Association participate in that organization, as well as members of other law enforcement agencies, Brown County, Green Bay, other places. It's a, at least a national organization. And so this outing was, like I said, August 3rd, 2018. At some point, some months later, the village approved an investigation into that outing, and the gist of it was that one of our officers, one of the public safety officers, had been dressed up in a way that someone thought was inappropriate at the golf outing. And so outside counsel was hired by the village to investigate this incident. A number of officers were interviewed as part of that investigation. And on the 6th of December, which is about four months after the golf outing, this first document that I have circulated was the outside attorney's summary of his investigation and conclusions. I've highlighted some of those. Those include the fact, the second finding of fact, that the village doesn't require membership in this organization, the dues are paid only by the officers who choose to participate. As number one also indicates, the first point, the officers participate completely voluntarily. And the fifth point, none of the officers were wearing anything that identified them as members of the Ashwabon Public Safety Department. The investigating attorney also found that it was unknown how many people were at this event, or who witnessed the officer who was wearing what some people later thought was inappropriate clothing. If you turn to the second page under the executive summary, near the bottom, the officer in question, public safety officer, was found not to have any intent to harass anyone, make anyone uncomfortable, infringe on anyone's rights. And all of the officers who were interviewed indicated that this was just a fun time that people were having off-duty, and that there was no intent to harass. Also, as I'll come back to, to our knowledge, there was actually no complaint that was filed by anyone about this event. I've, I've yet to see that there was a written complaint, a grievance, or any person who really came forward and said, "I was offended by anything," or "I feel like I was harassed" or imposed upon at this outing. The third page of the report by Attorney Lacy, who is the outside attorney on bullet point B, indicates that the conduct of the public safety officer in question was not unlawful and was not prohibited by any policy, meaning any policy of the village. There was nonetheless a recommendation made that a letter of direction or counseling be given to the public safety officer about his attire at that event, even though, again, the conclusion already had been drawn that there was nothing under village policy that would have prohibited what he was wearing, nothing about what he did that harassed anyone. And so that was the recommendation given to the village. If you look at the second document then, which is the December 18th letter, that came out a couple of weeks later, and you'll have the opportunity to review the document, I assume in closed session or, or on your own time, but if you look down at the policy directive that was given to the officer by the public safety department, he was directed to fully review the village's anti-harassment policy. Now again, nothing in any of the conclusions or findings of the outside investigator revealed that he had harassed, intended to harass, or even that any person stated that he or she felt harassed by what the officer did or was wearing. The second paragraph, if you turn that letter over, in the middle paragraph indicates, "The department has the right to retain and command respect and authority when engaged in policing activities. The conduct of officers, whether on or off-duty, that may impair credibility is harmful to the success of the department and to individual officers." There's nothing in the investigation, you'll read, which was the first document that would lead anyone to the conclusion that this officer either was engaged in any policing activities at that time, or had done anything to bring the department into disrepute, or himself into disrepute. No one could, no one reading the letter that, that I've shown you, which was the letter of December 2018, could mistake it for anything other than a criticism of this officer's conduct on August 3rd, 2018, even though there's been no conclusion or suggestion that he violated any department policy. No one reading it either could construe it as anything other than a veiled claim that on his own time, this officer, without a single complaint from anyone, somehow violated the anti-harassment policy. He was specifically directed, despite the investigation that found he had engaged in no harassment and intended not to, and that there was no person who claimed to have been harassed, directed that he needed to better understand or familiarize himself with the department's anti-harassment policy. So turning to that, that's the third document in the packet, and that is 4.14, the anti-harassment policy. Again, this is a fairly lengthy document, and you'll have the opportunity to read it and have advice of counsel about what it means, but the purpose of the policy is to maintain a healthy and safe work environment in which all individuals are treated with respect and dignity. The policy itself is that all employees have the right to work in an environment free of all forms of harassment, and that the village will tolerate no harassment, or condone, or allow it by any employee, or non-employees who conduct business with the village. The village also states that it will take immediate action to prevent such behavior and to remedy all reported instances of harassment and discrimination. So just kind of stopping there for a moment. There's no suggestion that with respect to our officer, he did anything to create an unhealthy or unsafe work environment, that, that any person, whether employee or non-employee, felt harassed in any way, and there has been no reported instance of harassment or discrimination by the officer, including at this event. So if we go on then to prohibited activity, sexual harassment and harassment, there's very specific descriptions of what that is, and lengthy descriptions, both in bullet point one, which relates to verbal, written, visual, or physical act that creates a hostile, intimidating, or offensive work environment, or interferes with individual's job performance. It prohibits any type of ridicule, mocking, deriding, or belittling of any person. It says that no one is to make offensive or derogatory comments to any person, and then it goes on to define what sexual harassment is. Under none of the definitions or examples that are given in this policy, did the outside investigator find that our officer did anything that qualified as, or was even skirting around the edges of any type of harassment. Now, again, if we go to, the pages under the policy are not numbered, but if you go to the policy that in the upper left, it's about the fifth page in, says 4-8, and underneath that, there's a heading that's called Procedures, the number three, Procedures. Any employee encountering harassment is encouraged but not required to inform the person that his or her actions are unwelcome or offensive. No one advised the officer, nor any of the supervising officers who were at the golfing event with him, all of whom were interviewed by outside counsel, that anyone informed any of them that harassment had occurred. Under 3B, it states, "Any employee who believes that he or she is being harassed shall report the incident as soon as possible to their supervisors." There's, there's been no such report. Further, no person who was at the golf, golfing event, who was a non-member of the department or non-village employee, reported that anything inappropriate happened, that they felt that they were demeaned, or harassed, or, so far as we know, even uncomfortable by what happened at that event. Notwithstanding the fact that there, it has been no such report, the officer was issued the letter that was from December of 2018. The final document that I've given you is just the covering sheet from, as well as the grievance procedure from the collective bargaining agreement that's in place between the union and the village. And I give that to you because one of the responses or contentions that have been made in support of denying our grievance is that, that what we're, what we are grieving or complaining about doesn't rise to the level of something that we can actually grieve through the collective bargaining agreement. And I want to, I just want to make you aware that our position with respect to this grievance is that it clearly does fall within what the contract, the collective bargaining agreement defines as a grievance. A grievance is defined as any complaint by an employee where there has been a misinterpretation of, or misapplication of a policy or procedure relating to conditions of employment. Now, it's our position, it will be our position if the matter goes to arbitration, that what was going on here was purely personal conduct outside the workplace, not sponsored by the village, the officers were not portraying themselves as, as village employees or members of the department. Nonetheless, it's being treated as though it was some type of extension of, or some sort of auxiliary event related to the department, and that's just not the case. But be that as it may, we disagree that any type of village policy controlled what was happening at the golf course at that time, and especially not the anti-harassment policy. Now, don't get me wrong, our position is not that if an officer does something off-duty that is illegal, immoral, somehow unlawful, even though not criminal, that it's a violation of a, of a village ordinance, that, that the officer can't be taken to task for it. It's, our point is, this officer did nothing that was a violation of any village policy. This is purely, a purely private conduct for entertainment, and it's not something that should have been, should have resulted in the issuance of a letter to the officer, but our, our disagreement with that does allow us to file a grievance over this, and so we're asking that you reconsidered the denial of our grievance in your enclosed session.
Thank you. Kenny?
So you're grieving the letter, is what you're grieving?
Correct.
I, I, just to follow what Mark said, just so I understand, you're, I think you characterized it as a letter of criticism. So you are grieving a letter of criticism to this officer? Is that where you're at?
We, we are grieving a letter that on its, on its very face states that the officer's conduct, apparently according to the, the letter, was somehow provocative or intentionally provocative, and that the village has the right to tell the officer what to do, how to dress when he's off of conduct, or off-duty, and a purely private matter, and that he is in the future supposed to be considering his actions in these type of circumstances, and being directed to familiarize or refamiliarize himself with an anti-harassment policy. It's our position that that is more than just a criticism, it's, it's essentially an indication to our officer that he did something wrong, and that he needs to reconsider his actions in similar circumstances in the future. It's our position that he did nothing wrong, and that this letter was inappropriately issued to him.
Any other questions? Comments?
We're discussing this in closed session, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron. Items for next agenda. I have none. If you have any, call the village. Number 11.
Closed session items. During the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabon may convene and close session pursuant to, A, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851E for the purpose of, one, possible discussion and action on deliberating or negotiating the investing of public funds regarding the development of parcel VA 162 related to tax incremental District Number Three, where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Two, possible discussion and action on deliberating or negotiating the investing of public funds regarding the development of parcels VA 89-2, VA 89-7-1, and VA 89-7-2, and public stadium lease related to tax incremental District Numbers Three and Five, where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. B, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851C for the purpose of possible discussion and action of considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of public safety employment personnel matters over which the village board has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. C, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851F for the purpose of possible discussion and action on considering Ashwabon Public Safety Employee Personnel and Grievance Matters and Financial, Medical, or Social, or Personal Histories or Disciplinary Data of Specific Persons, Preliminary Consideration of Specific Personnel Problems, or the Investigation of Charges Against Specific Persons Except Where Parenths B Applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations.[1746.19][1746.19](5) Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel concerning strategy with respect to the Ashwaban Public Safety Employee Personnel and Grievance Matters. The village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.852, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
Wow, you earned your money there, didn't you?
Move to go to closed session.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Present.
Trustee Paul.
Oh, yes, sorry. And he's told me to say yes for him.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bukowski.
Yes.
Trustee Malcheski.
Yes.
President Kardowski.
Yes.
We are in closed session.